We're now back in session at 10:30. Mr. Russo, at your convenience, proceed.
Yes, sir.
In two hours. Just let us know where you start.
The first witness will be Jesse Cortinas.
I'm saying that, I didn't hear you.
Jesse Cortinas.
Can we get Jesse Cortinas, please?
Mr. President, I'm assuming the time it takes for the witnesses to walk down here.
Yeah, well, we're stopping. Just stop it. We won't hurt you. Either side.
Right. It's a long walk.
Okay, witness has been sworn. Mr. Russo, clock's on.
Sir, would you please state your name for the record?
Jesse A. Cortinas.
What is your position?
I'm the Chief Technology Officer.
What are your duties and responsibilities in that position with the district?
Yes, sir. I am responsible for the overall leadership of and direction of development and initiatives for information systems and technology for the district.
If you would, would you take a look in the notebook before you turn to Exhibit Number 14, which has been admitted into evidence?
Yes, sir.
Can you identify that exhibit, please?
Yes, this is an acknowledgement page from an employee who has signed that they have read the Acceptable Use Agreement and administrative policies pertaining to technology.
Does Exhibit 14 show that Ms. Ross has agreed to comply with the district's acceptable use policy?
Yes, sir, it does.
What does the acceptable use policy say about the sharing of logins and passwords?
It specifically says that it is not allowed to share username and passwords.
Why does it do that?
It states that because with a username and password, a user is able to access different applications such as approving what purchasing requisitions, or transfer of funds, or, you know, approving leaves and stuff depending on their level in the organization.
Does that include the application known as Edge Euphoria?
Yes, sir.
Were you asked to prepare an audio recording for use of this hearing?
Yes, I was.
What were you asked to do?
I was asked to condense an audio recording to pull excerpts from a transcription of the original recording.
Was the entire recording of the May 9 interview that Ms. Ross made available to you?
Yes, it was.
Can you identify and take a look at what has been identified and admitted to evidence as Exhibit Number 31?
Yes, sir.
Is that the recording, is the recording that you made a recording of the highlighted portions of Exhibit 31?
Yes, sir.
In preparing the recording, did you do anything to alter any of the questions asked, or the answers given as recorded at the May 9 interview?
No, sir.
Would you please play that recording for us?
Yes, sir. Can I step over there?
Result of an audit of campus. And my name is Robert Reese, and I'm here as the attorney for the Judson Independent School District, and the purpose of this interview is to ask some questions about some concerns that have arisen as a result of an audit of campus funds at Metzger. Present here today, I'm going to ask each person to identify themselves, so we'll have it recorded, and each person will have to each time today who they are.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Conley?
Thank you for that. I'm here to assist Ms. Ross. You said campus funds, are you talking about the $4 million budget, or?
No, sir, you'll see when we get into the question.
I did. Oh, Jim Conley. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Carolyn Ross, Principal of Metzger Middle School.
Eli Labera, Associate Superintendent of Administration.
Irma Hernandez, Chief Human Resources Officer.
So, Ms. Ross, let me make sure that I'm understanding it. In those checks that you were shown on February the 23rd, there were some checks that apparently were not signed by you.
Right.
Did you know before February 23rd that someone else had signed some checks with your name?
No.
Did you ever require or permit Ms. Hopkins to approve purchase requests or other types of requests that you were required to approve as a principal?
No.
Do you have any reason, or... If Ms. Hopkins were said that she did, do you have any, do you have knowledge of any reason why she would have not to be truthful about that?
So, it depends on if it needed a check, everything needed my approval.
Okay.
What are you talking about, purchase orders?
There are a number of different things. Purchase orders are a big part of it. Did you give her access to your computer?
No. I have access to my own computer, and if I get stuck, she'd come and stand over my shoulder and help me with things.
So, you never gave her the password that you would use for, to access like Eudiforia?
Ediforia.
Ediforia?
No, because she had her password and I had mine.
Did you ever tell Ms. Hopkins that she could sign your name to any checks drawn on the account shown here?
There was no reason for me to give her permission. I'm at work every day.
So, the answer to that question is no?
It's no. Yeah. And then there's a second signature she could have gotten from Ms. Gomez.
Did you ever have Ms. Hopkins run any personal errands for you during school working hours?
No.
Can you tell us, Ms. Ross, the training you've received in connection with district policies and procedures relating to receiving, keeping, and spending campus activity checks?
We see, we go through a yearly training during our principals' leadership workshops.
And basically, that's something that happens every year at the beginning of the year?
At the beginning of the year.
Have you gone to all those trainings?
Yes, sir.
Have you complied with those policies and the procedures that are required of you as a principal?
Yes.
That have you been trained in?
Yes, sir.
Can you take a look at Exhibit 3 for me, please? And is this a copy of the manual that you receive training on? Number 3.
I don't recall getting this manual.
Was the training, was the training you received based on the manual?
I think parts of it. I mean, every year, we receive just kind of varying parts of it, because we're in workshops all day. This would be like a 10-day training, just on various parts of it, I receive training.
Oh, that, I'm sorry, excuse me. What parts do you recall getting training on?
I recall getting training on funding.
Well, you said you had training on funding. Did that training include what the process was in order to get approval, or having something purchased by the school?
Uh huh.
Based upon the training you received each year, did you believe you had an understanding of what the process was and what you had to do in compliance with that policy?
Yes, sir, and I trusted my secretary, too. She came from the payroll department.
Did you understand yourself what the process was?
Yes.
And you followed that process?
Yes.
Have you had any involvement in the making of a film or a video about Neville Shed?
Yes, sir.
Was any of that made on Metzger Middle School property?
He works for me there.
So, it was...
Yeah, because I was like, yeah.
Can you tell me a little bit about the project, who authorized it, and what it's about?
Why do I need authorization? It's a private film, and it's done after hours. But Neville's at my school.
So, in other words, you didn't get authorization for it because it was done after hours?
Yes, and he works, yeah. We do that on our own time.
Did you work on the film as well?
I'm working on the film. On my own time.
What do you do, are you writing it, or are you actually...
I work with a production company.
So, is that your company?
Part.
But none of this, none of this was done, none of the work on the video was done during school working hours?
Not during, after hours.
Did you ever charge faculty or staff to wear jeans at Metzger?
I don't do anything no differently than what a principal does.
So, I take the answer to that as yes?
On Thursdays, it's a dollar. Most principals charge like five for a month, so I don't do anything no differently than any other principal does. And on Friday, it's Spirit Day.
What was the money that was received for the jean, charging for the jeans useful?
There were times, Ms. Hopkins, would, say, for instance, we had visitors come to the campus, we had principals' meetings there, she would purchase breakfast for the teachers during faculty meetings, so all the money went back to the teachers. Children needing deodorant, parents needing gas money, I mean, just stuff to help the community, mainly the teachers, kids, you know. Mr. Russo, I've been at Metzger six years. I've cleaned that freaking cafeteria every day, and I, short staff custodians, and I have to get the children to help me buy cookies for them, just to help me wipe tables and mop and sweep. Six years I've been short custodians. I have not missed a day wiping tables and sweeping and mopping.
Did you have anything that was referred to as a petty cash fund?
No, this jean money.
Did you ever charge students to attend pep rallies?
The coaches was in charge of all the pep rallies, and the funding came through Lauren's office, and I would always tell the coaches to turn the money into her. They were charged, not Ms. Ross. Why is Ms. Ross charging all of a sudden for all this? The pep rallies were held by the coaches, not by Ms. Ross. All that money went into the coaches' fund. If the girl coaches wanted to have a pep rally, they would charge the children a dollar. Of course, Ms. Ross says, bring a dollar. All that fun, all that money went to the coaches.
Do you know how many, how many school years this has gone on at Metzger?
Just, I think, one or two years.
Did you ever charge students to attend movies during the school day?
No, we didn't show any movies during the school day.
Did you ever charge students to watch dress rehearsals for school plays?
Like if they had a soft show? I didn't charge, the sponsors charged, the theater arts teachers. I'm being, you're asking me that I charge, or that the sponsors charge?
Well, we'll break it down.
Oh, okay.
You didn't charge individually?
No.
So, you didn't see any problem with Manny charging students to attend these soft showings?
Again, it was a dollar, and he was trying to support his program, but that kid was right, he was paying for a lot of props out of his pocket. People paid to go to plays all the time. It's pretty cheap.
Did you, or anyone else, anyone else on the campus that you know of, charge any students to attend school programs such as the Black History Program?
I charged, say that again?
Yes, ma'am. Did you ever charge students?
No. The sponsors, each sponsor, our activity sponsor, that's up to them if they want to charge a dollar. I wasn't in charge of no programs.
So, you left it up to the sponsors to determine what they would charge and what they would use the money for?
Exactly. Just tried to support all the programs, Mr. Russo.
Did you ever charge students for temporary IDs?
That's from Ms. Dixon's office. That came from Ms. Dixon's office in the APs. Ms. Ross did not charge the children. I thought a dollar was overrated for a temporary ID.
And I'm sorry, who's Ms. Dixon?
Ms. Dixon is, she's the secretary to the assistant principal. They charged a dollar. I thought it was a little ridiculous. And then to replace a regular ID was five dollars.
Do you know how long charging students for temporary IDs has been going on at Metzger?
I want to say probably two years, about two years.
Do you know what happened to the money that was received for the temporary IDs?
Ask Ms. Dixon. She's supposed to turn all that money into Ms. Hopkins', and she kept it in a drawer in the main office.
Ms. Hopkins said, or Ms. Dixon?
Ms. Dixon. Carolyn Dixon.
So, how do you know Ms. Dixon kept it in her drawer?
Well, that's where the children would go to her office to get a temporary ID. It was in Student Services, that's where they would come and get it.
So, did you, did you see any, did you see her put money into, or was it in a drawer? You saw Ms. Dixon do that?
That's where she had to keep it locked up. And at the end of the day, she would turn it into Lauren. That's what she told me.
Who's she, Ms. Dixon or Ms. Hopkins?
Ms. Dixon. Ms. Dixon. I never had a reason to question where they put the money. Lauren was the bookkeeper.
So, you didn't have any responsibility for anything that happened with the money?
I trusted the sponsors or whomever would do the right thing at the end of the day. I mean, I would never do a tally with Lauren, hey, come in, how much money did you take in today type thing. I just was focused on instruction, and I trusted her. I trusted that she was doing the right thing. She is my secretary.
Do you ever know of students being charged for composition books or notebooks?
No, not notebooks, but composition books. Ms. Dixon would charge them 50 cents at times. Most of the time, I just gave them all away, and many times, I just gave my teachers boxes at a time. So, every year, I would allow my teachers to have so many boxes of composition books, but not notebooks. We don't use notebooks. We use, this is what they would do, something like that.
So, Ms. Dixon would charge students for composition books?
Yep, sometimes she would charge them 50 cents.
Did you have any discussions with Ms. Dixon about charging students?
Many times.
What did you tell her?
I told her, we're Title I, and just give the children the composition books.
When was the first time you told her that? Not the exact date?
Ms. Russo, many, many times, I mean, over the course of the two years. You know, she'd get a temper, Ms. Ross, these kids, they need to be responsible, make them pay. I'm like, they're Title I, we're Title I, get it, too.
So, over the last, so you're aware that this happened over the last two school years, this school year and the school year before? The charging some students 50 cents for the composition books?
Sometimes she would, sometimes she wouldn't. I would always want to give the children the books.
Did you ever talk to her or give her a directive not to charge the students?
Yes, I did, many times.
Did you ever do that in writing?
Never in writing.
That training you mentioned towards the beginning of the interview that you had once a year, did that involve the proper way of handling cash and activities?
Uh huh.
Ms. Ross, I'm going to hand you what I'm calling Exhibit Number 6.
Okay.
That's an annual activity fund review acknowledgement form. Is that your signature on Exhibit 6?
Yes, and it was signed in 2014, yes, sir.
And is this one of the, I think you indicated that there was an annual review, and you would get information about the reviews, and this would be the way they would be given to you?
Yes.
Did you, can you go through that and tell me what steps that you took in order to carry out the recommendations that were made by the report?
Back from 2014?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I worked with Lauren, and I just told her to make sure that everything that they were asking us to do in this feedback, that we were to follow to a team. And we have, I've had faculty meetings, so I have to get the documentation on the dates when we were going to review activity funds and what the expectations were, but I did have a faculty meeting in reference to some of the concerns here. We have copies and have a record of faculty meetings.
Did you ever let someone who's not an employee of the district have a copy of a, or get a key to any of the facilities of the district?
No.
Mr. Cortinas, if you would, resume in the witness chair, please. Mr. Cortinas, are you familiar with the process that is required to be followed before a person is permitted to serve as a volunteer on any campus?
Yes, sir.
Could you briefly describe that process for us?
Yes, when someone wants to be a volunteer, they fill out a form at the campus, and then that's turned in, and a police background check is done on that person.
As Chief Technology Officer, do you have access to the records that show whether a volunteer has been cleared to serve as a volunteer?
Yes, sir.
Did you search those records to determine if a man by the name of John Coker had been cleared to serve as a volunteer at Metzger Middle School or any other campus?
Yes, sir.
What was the results of your search?
We did not find any evidence that Mr. Coker had been run through the background check.
I'll pass the witness.
Mr. Cortinas?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cortinas?
Yes, sir.
Did you have any other contact with Mr. Copeland?
Did I have any? No, no, sir.
Did anybody call you up and say that they have a problem with him?
No, sir.
Did any outside authority come to you and say that there was some issue with Mr. Copeland?
No, sir.
Did you have an inquiry from any police department investigative agency about Mr. Copeland?
No, sir.
Did you ever discover what Mr. Copeland's volunteer efforts were?
No, sir.
You don't know that he was there for Bible study?
I did hear that. Yes, sir.
So, what was the, what was the effect on the campus of Mr. Copeland's being there without having gone through the background check?
I couldn't answer that question, sir. I don't know, I didn't know that was going on, but...
My question is, did anything untoward happen as a result of Mr. Copeland not being cleared to conduct Bible study?
Not that I'm aware of.
Did you know, did you know that they labeled his participation, not his Bible study, but his inspiration?
No, sir.
And just for the record, it's Mr. Coker, not Copeland? Was it Mr. Coker or Mr. Copeland?
Coker, yes.
Could you speak up, please?
Coker.
I have no further questions.
And my only refrost would be, in terms of the statement that his name was really Coker rather than Copeland, would that change any way your response?
We would have to do a search on Copeland if it is Copeland. Yes, sir.
But you did do one on Coker, and there was...
Yes, sir.
Nobody else made an inquiry on him?
No, sir.
The next witness I want to call is Deborah Stevens, and she is by phone, and so I'm going to ask that Mr. Cortinas be excused from the rule in order to be able to make the connection with Ms. Stevens.
I have no objection.
And she will need to be sworn in.
I have one more question for Mr. Cortinas, if I may.
If he's in the process of, he's already been finished as a witness, he's in the process of connecting her, I'm going to object.
You're already excused?
Yes, sir. I said he's excused. He's our technical guy, that's why he's still sitting there.
I just had one question.
No, we are excused, and we directed, redirected. And I asked, does anybody have anything else, and no one said anything. I asked both of you, but nothing.
Well, I'm saying something now, that's actually...
Well, no, sir. I asked if you had anything else to say, and no one responded, we're done with this witness. I don't know how more fair I could be, is ask if anyone has anything else to say. We square her in over the phone for record. Okay, she's ready. I got a dollar. Yeah, she had to go to the restroom. Sorry. So, I'm going to dial her.
Deborah Stevens?
Hi, Deborah.
Good morning.
Good, I'm gonna step away now, I think Mr. Russo's gonna take over from here.
If you stay there and hold the phone.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Stevens, you need to be sworn in before I ask my questions.
Could you hear him?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Stevens, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, if you would please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give today will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Stevens, would you please state your name for the record?
Uh, my name is Deborah Stevens.
In what position do you hold with the district?
I am the applications coordinator in the technology services department.
And what are your duties in that position?
I'm sorry?
What are your duties in that position?
My primary duties are the Eduforia manager for all the applications in Eduforia, and I also oversee all the trainings that go on in the district for our software applications.
Do you know Carolyn Ross?
Yes, sir.
Do you know Lauren Hopkins?
Yes, sir.
Did you ever provide training to them?
Yes, sir.
What are the technology topics you trained them on?
Um, the software applications, um, the Intranet, techno, um, hi, just a minute, I have to get my breath, um, the Intranet, Eduforia, School World, Teacher Access Center, Microsoft Office, the Suite, um, FS Direct, Help Desk, just to name a few.
What tasks can be done on Eduforia?
Um, repeat that again, please?
Yes, ma'am, what tasks can be performed in Eduforia?
I oversee, I create all the electronic forms that are in the district that are either campus use or district use, I set up the workflows and the cabinets or department assignments.
Did you ever have any discussions with Ms. Hopkins about issues involving the sharing of logins and passwords?
Yes, sir, on, on, at each of my trainings, we talk about the AUP policy for the district that you are not allowed to use or share your personal login or password.
Did approximately, when was the last time in 2015 that you came to Metzger to provide training?
Um, one time in July and one time in August.
Sometime after that last training, did you receive a telephone call from a person in the district's accounting office?
Yes, sir, I did.
Who called you?
Teresa Bear.
What was she calling you about?
I'm object to hearsay.
It's not being offered for the truth of what's being said, it's to set the context for a conversation that Ms. Stevens had with Ms. Ross.
I continue my objection, that is hearsay.
What was Ms. Bear calling you about?
She asked if in form space, in the workflow or the actual application, if there was any way to actually see who was logging in or logging into the system.
Deborah, Deborah, hang on, hang on.
You must, you must file an objection, otherwise it is waived. And I, and you must object each time, otherwise you waive it. Wait a minute, you can interject an objection anytime it's required. Well, thank you.
Let me ask you this, Ms. Stevens, after your conversation with Ms. Bear, what did you do?
I called Lauren Hopkins.
What did you ask Ms. Hopkins?
I asked her if she was doing something that she wasn't supposed to be doing with login.
What did she tell you about her login?
I object.
For someone else?
I object, hearsay.
What did you tell her after she told you she was logging in for someone else?
I told her that she could get in a lot of hot water for doing so, and that she needs to go into her boss's office and tell her that she cannot do this anymore.
Objection. Objection is hearsay.
Did anyone from the Metzger campus call you after that conversation with Ms. Hopkins?
Yes, sir.
Who?
Ms. Ross.
How long after your phone conversation with Ms. Hopkins ended did Ms. Ross call you?
Within ten minutes.
Would you please tell us about that conversation with Ms. Ross?
She asked me what I was, what I was doing, and I told her that I told Ms. Hopkins that she could no longer log in as in anyone else, and that it was her job as the principal to oversee all the electronic forms that comes into her hands, and that if she could not do this duty, that she would need to assign it to an assistant principal.
Did she indicate anything about having time to do what she was required to do?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes, ma'am, did Ms. Ross indicate to you anything about the time she had to perform those tasks?
Okay, I'm sorry, one more time.
Yes, ma'am, in the conversation with Ms. Ross, what did she tell you about having time to perform the tasks that she was required to perform?
Yes, sir, she said that she didn't have the time to sit down and process these forms, and that I told her that her job as the principal was to do this, and that if she couldn't perform this responsibility, that she needed to assign it to someone else.
Did she indicate that she could contact anyone else about the inquiry that you were making?
Yes, sir, she said that if she had to call a board member, or Jose Elizondo, or the superintendent, she was going, she was going to, and I...
I'm sorry.
That she needed to do that, if she needed to.
During that phone...
That I had to do my job.
During that phone call, Ms. Stevens, did Ms. Ross ever deny that she was sharing her login and password information with Ms. Hopkins?
No, sir.
Did Ms. Ross violate the district's policy by sharing her login and password information with Ms. Hopkins?
Yes, sir.
I'll pass the witness, Judge Conley, sir?
Okay, I assumes, I, objection, because that assumes a fact that's not in evidence. Ms., do you have a copy of your witness statement, which is Exhibit 25? Ms. Deborah?
Ms. Stevens?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is Jim Conley, I'm the personal representative for Ms. Carolyn Ross. Do you have a copy of Exhibit 25, which is your statement?
Okay, you're, I'm sorry to say this, but you're echoing, can you repeat that, please?
Sir, if you want to go over there, it's better for you, whatever, whatever works is okay with me.
Would your permission?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ross?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, Ms. Stevens?
Oh, you sound wonderful, thank you.
Do you have a copy of Exhibit 25, which is your witness statement?
Uh, unfortunately, I do, but it's not on hand at this very moment, I'm at a pig barn and sitting in a truck.
Well, let me try to help you, let me try to help you out, I'm gonna represent to you, I'm gonna read a paragraph from it, and...
Yes.
And then ask you some questions about it.
Absolutely.
All right, and it's dated 5/24/2016, so you recently completed this.
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to the second paragraph on Exhibit 25 of the district. "On July 21st, 2015, my role took me to a training for our district's campus secretaries." Were that all the secretaries, or some of them, or most of them?
Everybody that was required to be there, yes, sir.
"My presentation covered all of our technology applications and some hands-on training in our lab."
Correct.
When you say hands-on training in the lab, does it mean everybody got a chance, or...
Yes, everybody was assigned, assigned to a computer, yes, sir.
"One of the subject areas I covered is your login password and the district's acceptable use policy."
Yes, sir.
"The acceptable use policy," it says AUP here, "is a document stipulating constraints and practices that a user must agree to for access to our district's network." Is that...
Correct.
Is that agreement executed annually, once, or how's that done?
That is not done by, by myself, I assume that from E-Web to HR Department or through our technology department.
Okay, do you know whether it is offered every year, or after conclusion of training, or what?
It's whenever either HR or our technology CTO sets up the time for that to be taking place.
So, if you signed one in 2010, it would still be applicable today, or has the document changed?
Document has not changed.
Logins and passwords are not to be shared with anyone?
Correct.
And I see you have a exclamation point at the end of that. Was that a point of emphasis?
And then some, yes, sir.
Okay, and what was the response?
Had some snickering in the audience, and then I repeated myself again that you are not to share your login or your password.
The snickers came from the audience, some secretaries made comments, what kind of comments did some of the secretaries make?
They weren't addressing, addressing it to me, they were addressing comments to each other, I just heard comments.
Okay, what kind of comments did you hear?
Just comments, I can't say if it pertained to what I addressed, or they were just talking among themselves, but I, they were snickering as soon as I made that comment.
Okay, and then, and shortly thereafter the snickering came to comments? Is that correct?
Amongst themselves, yes, sir.
Okay.
Not addressed to me.
All right, and so, would it be reasonable to assume that the snickering and the comments were intertwined?
If I had to make an assumption, yes.
Okay, and these were the secretaries from the entire district campus, is that correct?
Correct.
And these were secretaries and working for administrators that had probably executed the acceptable use policy, is that correct?
Correct.
But would it be fair to say that the practice, at least on July 21st, 2015, was not as widespread as it had ought to be at that time?
I'm gonna object, that calls for speculation on this witness?
Well, you, you were at the meeting, right? Ms. Stevens, you were at the meeting?
Yes, I, I was the trainer on that.
And it comprised all the district campus secretaries?
And, and our district office secretaries, yes.
Okay, and after, in that environment, when you brought up the idea of people having login and passwords made sacrosanct, there was snickers and comments?
Yes, sir.
So, would it be reasonable to assume that at least some of, some of the secretaries had used their logins and passwords on behalf of their administrator?
Once again, I'm gonna object.
I can't answer that.
Excuse me, Ms. Stevens, I'm objecting, that once again calls for her to speculate, and he hasn't laid the groundwork for her to be able to do so in this case.
Okay, well, assume everybody in the building was a district secretary, assume, assume that you discussed the sanctity of logins and passwords, and assume that people started snickering and making comments that were not supportive, at least the snickering certainly wasn't, you didn't take the snickering as, as affirming that position, did you? You know, I mean, how did you feel, did you feel like that they were saying, yeah, you're right, or were they saying, in what lifetime do you think that's gonna apply?
You're, excuse me, Mr. President, I'm gonna object, the question itself calls for rank speculation on her part.
Your objection is noted, it's up to each board member to consider what weight to give this evidence.
You can answer, Ms. Stevens.
I don't know if it was the timing when I had made the statement about you cannot share your login or password with their snickering. All I know is, I made the comment...
And it happened.
I, I had snickering. Now, if, I can't, I can't be in the mindset of them, but in my mindset, for those that snickered, I can't tell you who they were, it's just, when you're training more than thirty people in a room, you don't pinpoint where it's coming from unless the hand is right, and there was just chatter and snickering amongst the ladies and gentlemen in the room.
Now, in your experience, did you find that there were any other secretary slash bookkeepers who had login and password of their administrator?
Oh, no, sir.
Was it, in your entire district experience, that you've never had, you've never recognized that someone had a login or password of their administrator?
This is, it's not, no, sir, it's not something that they just voluntarily raise their hand and say, guess what I do, no.
Okay, but do you go out to the schools and inspect to see whether or not they are?
Yes, well, I don't inspect, I go out to campuses and I do campus training, and when secretaries and I work one-on-one together, and a question is asked of, from them to me, I answer it, yes.
And nobody ever asked a question about that?
Are we talking when I'm one-on-one with someone, or when I'm in a group training?
One-on-one.
Yes, when I have been on one-on-one training, yes, sir.
Was it more than two people?
Not in a room.
No, I mean, more than two people in, in, in your one-on-ones, we put them up in sequence, were there more than two?
No, that, um, for this year, one person.
All right, let's, now, let's go to your visits in your one-on-ones, uh, when you visited Lauren, did you ask her if she was logging on for anyone?
No, sir.
If, if there is a question about the precedent duties to process these forms, did you make a suggestion that she should assign it to the assistant principal, I'm not talking about Ms. Ross now, that she should assign part of it to an assistant principal?
No, sir.
Well, I'm gonna read from your statement. "I told her," and I'm reading in the last paragraph, five down, "I told her that it was the responsibility of the principal to have knowledge of every E-form that comes across her desk, and that if she couldn't do it, then assign it to one of her assistant principals."
That is correct, were you, I, when you were asking me, I was under the impression you were asking me if Lauren asked that, no. That statement is true, miss, I said that to Ms. Ross.
That's right.
Not to Lauren Hopkins.
Okay, and did you subsequently find out that Ms. Ross had in fact done that?
No, no, sir, because I set up the workflows for all electronic forms, and forms are primarily set up to what they call a budget manager, which is a principal?
Uh, objection, it's not responsive, I asked a question.
Please, did you let, did you let that witness? Please, did you let, did you let that witness answer the question that he asked?
I have my question and I have to look for my answer, when you get a chance, you can talk to her and ask.
You're interrupting, you're interrupting that witness.
If you ask a question, let the witness answer, okay, we're on telephone here, it's hard for the court reporter to get all these jumbled words in there together, so please let the witness respond.
Uh, well, that's time responsive to my question, my question was, did you find out whether or not she assigned it to an assistant principal?
No, sir.
Okay, and if she had signed it to an assistant principal, would that have been a suggestion that you made?
I made it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Russo?
Uh, Ms. Stevens, if
Yes, sir.
If Ms. Ross assigned that to someone else, that someone else would have been required to use their own password, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
If Ms. Ross had assigned the task that she was supposed to do to someone else, that someone else would have accessed the program using their own password, is that correct?
No.
What password would she use? He or she use?
Okay. My, here's my question, or here's a fact. In order for Ms. Ross to give that duty to an assistant principal, I have to change the workflow.
Did you ever change the workflow to permit someone else besides Ms. Ross to access Eduforia and perform the task that Ms. Ross was required to perform?
I never changed the workflow, it stayed with the principal.
Thank you.
Judge, anything else, sir?
Yes, yes. Uh, uh, are you saying that the, no, I'm sorry, that's improper way to phrase this. Did Ms. Chanel Gomez or Ms., Mr. Jerome Johnson uh ever have access to the E forms that you're talking about?
No, sir.
And if they had had it, would, how would, you would have known it because uh you have to clear people and give them the passwords for that or they, you have their passwords and you give them access?
If, if Ms. Ross assigned the form to an assistant principal, they would have had to have her login and password.
And if the assistant principals, I'm sorry, I'll take that back. Uh, did, uh, if, and when you were examining the workflow, what, what, what were the indicators that the approvals were coming from some other source?
I'm here, I'm just trying to process what you're adding.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me, please, may I?
All right, sir, yes, sir, whatever you need to do.
Hello?
Yes, I'm here, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm standing here. Was the uh, did, when you, when you heard, when you recall, when you received a call from Ms. Bear, did you call Ms. Ross or did you call Lauren?
Ms. Hopkins.
And why would you call her if there was a, if she had a problem with Ms. Ross's responsibility?
I didn't know for a fact that she was going into Ms. Ross's. I called Lauren and asked her, was she logging in for anyone else? And she said, yes.
And what did Ms. Bear tell you that led you to the conclusion that she may be the one doing it?
All Ms. Bear asked me was if there was an actual way to see who was logging in for someone. And I said, no. You have to have their login and password to do that.
And, and did you have any other information from any other source that indicate that the, that the login was being used by Ms. Hopkins?
No, sir.
So the basis was Ms. Hopkins, Hopkins representations to you that she was in fact doing it. And did you point out any particular transaction that she, that you suspected that she might have been involved in?
No, sir, it was a generality.
Mr. Russo, anything else, sir?
No, I have no further questions, but I would like to get a rough idea of how much time I have left.
We are at here at forty-nine minutes. Into it.
Oh, into it.
Into it, yeah, not left, into it. Judge Connaught, anything else, sir, the lady's on the phone and I wanna make sure we're, we're good. That it, thank you, ma'am, appreciate your assistance. Mr. Russo.
Thanks.
Mr. Russo, the next witness um
Hold it, just
She's gone.
Is she still on there?
No, she's gone.
Oh, she's gone.
The next witness is Jose Elizondo.
You can't ask him a question. You can't ask counsel questions, you can't ask a witness a question, I guess. Can she ask what the current position is?
Current position, witness?
No, yeah, I'm just, um, he mentioned her. Mr. Russo. We're stopped at fifty minutes, Mr. Russo.
That
Into it, you got an hour and ten minutes. Okay, clock is starting.
Would you please state your name for the record, sir?
Jose Daniel Elizondo, Jr.
And what is your position?
I am the chief financial officer for the Judson Independent School District.
Can you briefly describe the duties and responsibilities you have in that position?
Uh, yes, sir, I am responsible for the oversight of all monies that come into the district and that leave the district. So I am responsible for the accounts payable, payroll, tax office, the accounting department, which is in charge of overseeing all the activity funds at our schools.
Does the district have an activity fund manual?
Yes, we do.
What types of information does that manual contain?
It contains, it's an explanation of all the policies and procedures that we have for operating those funds as far as collecting monies on the campuses, uh, how the monies are supposed to be spent, who is supposed to oversee, all that, has the roles for every individual on the campus, whether it's a sponsor, the secretary, the principal, all that spelled out in that manual.
Does it set out what are permitted fundraising events?
Uh, yes, sir, it does.
Would selling tickets to students so they can attend pep rallies be a permissible fundraising activity?
No, sir.
Would selling tickets to students so they can attend movies during the school day be a permissible fundraising activity?
No, sir.
Would selling composition, composition books paid for with district funds to students for the use be a permissible fundraising activity?
No, sir, definitely not.
Is the manual that you talked about made available to employees?
Yes, it is.
How is it made available?
Uh, it is on our, on our intranet in the portal.
Has every version of the manual included the requirements for the proper handling of campus activity funds?
Yes, sir.
If you would confirm for us in looking at exhibit fifteen, which has been offered and admitted, is that the activity fund manual for August of twenty fifteen?
Yes, sir, it is.
Would you look on page three and tell us what the manual says about following the policies and procedures?
It says the, the procedures provided, provide both administrative and accounting controls uh to safeguard assets and ensure reliability of the financial records. That accounting for activity funds is decentralized in all laws, regulations, policies and procedures that apply to the administration of the Judson Independent I S D funds applied to the administration of activity funds and all monies. I'm sorry, yes, ma'am. And all monies received and accounts dispersments are processed and recorded at the campus level according to district policies and procedures.
On page four, what does it say about the principal's responsibility involving campus activities?
The principal is responsible for the proper collection, disbursement and control of all activity funds at the campus.
On page twelve, what does it say about the principal's responsibility for spending of funds out of campus activity accounts?
The principal is responsible for all funds spent out of the activity accounts at his or her campus and it must be authorized properly.
Would you take a look at what has been marked and admitted as exhibit eighteen, please?
Yes, sir.
What is that?
This is the bank signature card for Metzger Middle School, it is for the bank account that was established for their activity fund. And it shows the signatures of the authorized signers for checks on, on that account. And the three individuals listed on here are Carolyn Ross, the principal, Lauren Hopkins, the secretary, and Chanel Gomez, the assistant principal.
Why is it important to have two people sign checks?
Well, we wanna ensure that when funds are being expended, that we have more than one individual looking at what the expenses are gonna be, that it's really a safeguard for both the funds and also for the personnel on that campus to make sure that uh good decisions are being made as to what, and appropriate decisions as to what monies are being spent on.
Could you briefly describe the annual activity fund review process?
Sure, um, every one of our campuses receives an annual review of their activity accounts at least once a year. Some of them will be reviewed in the beginning of the school year, some mid-year, some at the end of the year, and we alternate them. So if we do one school at the beginning of the year, at, this year, for instance, that school will now be audited until the middle of the year or the end of the year, the following year, to make sure we have a variety of transactions. We, um, are, one of our individuals in our office is responsible for doing that. They review all the cash receipts that are, all the deposits that are made, all the checks that are cut, uh, to make sure that, we have a number of standard tests that we apply to every one of those uh transactions to make sure that they're meeting all of our requirements and that is really just following the rules that are in the procedure manual. Uh, once the, the audit is complete, the review is complete, memorandum or, is issued to the principal at that school, uh, letting them know what findings were resulted as part of the audit and also recommendations as to how to correct those for future years. And in references, in the recommendations, references the procedure manual and sections of the procedure manual as to how it should be handled.
Can you tell us, uh, the item that has been marked and admitted as exhibit seventeen, is that an annual activity fund review that was signed by Ms. Ross?
Yes, sir, it is.
Was another annual activity fund review conducted for Metzger Middle, Middle School following the accounting year after one reflected in exhibit seventeen?
Yes, sir, there was.
Who initially worked on that review?
Uh, Teresa Bear.
What is her position?
She is one of the accountants in our department who is responsible for doing the reviews of all the school activity accounts every year.
Did Ms. Bear bring attention to any concern she had about that review to anyone else in your department?
Uh, yes, she did.
To whom?
Uh, Nicole Dean.
Uh, and what is Ms. Dean's position?
She is the director of accounting, she is Ms. Bear's direct supervisor.
Did Ms. Dean then raise any concerns with you?
Uh, yes, she did.
What concerns did Ms. Dean bring to your attention?
The primary ones were that there appeared to be some checks that were, that had two signatures on them, but one of the signatures did not appear to be an original signature that matched the signature card. So we felt there was somebody on the campus that was signing somebody else's name on, on those checks. There was another concern that we had quite a number of transactions that did not have any documentation that was attached to it. We also had a concern that one of the vendors that was being paid had a similar last name as to the principal of the campus, so we weren't sure who exactly who that was and we wanted to just clarify as to who that was. And those payments didn't have any documentation behind them. And there were other, a few other concerns, but those are the main ones.
Exhibit nineteen, are those, does that exhibit constitute checks that there were questions about?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Are campus principals required to perform monthly bank statement reconciliations?
They review them, uh, the secretary, the bookkeeper performs them and then they're handed to the principal for review. Um, and as part of that review, they're supposed to look at the bank statement to make sure that the ending balance in the bank statement is the balance that's being used by the bookkeeper to reconcile back to our books. We're just trying to make sure that our books I'm sorry. We just wanna make sure that our books match what the bank balance should be in accounting for any deposits that haven't been recorded yet or any outstanding checks.
In that monthly reconciliation review, are the canceled checks available as a part of that review?
Yes, sir, images of the canceled checks are attached to the bank statement and they're part of that packet that's reviewed.
Did you determine that some follow-up was needed to look into the concerns that had been brought to your attention by Ms. Dean?
Yes, definitely.
Was an investigation conducted?
Yes, sir.
Following the investigation, was the spreadsheet prepared as a part of the audit process?
Uh, yes, it was.
Were campus records reviewed in connection with preparing the spreadsheet?
Yes, sir, they were.
Were the records reviewed in connection with preparing the spreadsheet, records that were made at or near the time reflected in the records?
Yes, sir.
Were those records made by someone with knowledge of what was reported?
Yes, sir.
Are those records kept in the regular course of the district's business?
Yes.
Are those records made as a part of the regular financial activities of the district?
Yes.
Are you one of the custodians of the records reflected in the spreadsheet?
Yes, sir.
Did you review the spreadsheet?
Yes, I did.
Did you personally review all the records that are reflected in the spreadsheet?
Yes, sir, I did.
I'm gonna ask you to take a look at what has been marked and admitted as exhibit twenty. Is that the spreadsheet regarding Metzger Middle School checks with insufficient documentation?
Yes, it is.
Would you please go over the information based, that is set out in that spreadsheet with respect to checks number six-two-three and check six-two-four?
Check sixteen-twenty-three?
Sixteen-twenty-three?
Yes, sir.
And sixteen-twenty-four?
Yes, sir. Uh, check number sixteen-twenty-three was, has the check date of January the eighth, two thousand and fifteen. It was made payable to H E B for one hundred dollars. That check appears to have the original signature from the principal, Ms. Ross, and the second signature is from Ms. Hopkins, the secretary. There, on this particular check, there were no attachments to it as far as receipts or approval of funds. We have certain procedures, certain documents that are required, there, nothing was attached to this check, we really don't know what the funds were spent on. The, one of the things that we did note about this particular check is that when we looked at the canceled image of it, uh, it was endorsed by Bobby Ross, Jr. And check number sixteen-twenty-four was cut or has a check date of the same date, January the eighth, twenty fifteen. It is made payable to Bobby Ross, Jr., it is for one hundred dollars. That check appears to have been signed by the principal, Carolyn Ross, and also by Ms. Lauren, the secretary. Um, that particular check also does not have any type of invoice or contract attached to it, so we really didn't, we couldn't really determine exactly if the services had been performed or what services were for.
Exhibit twenty be flexed test done on how many checks?
Uh, twenty-nine checks.
Were other checks tested?
Uh, yes, sir, there were twenty additional checks tested.
So forty-nine checks were tested altogether?
Yes, sir.
What percentage of the total number of checks tested showed errors?
Uh, sixty percent.
Were any of the problems identified in exhibit seventeen found to exist in the audit reflected in exhibit twenty?
Uh, yes, sir.
What were they?
There were checks that were cut both of these years with insufficient documentation, in other words, no receipts were, were attached to them. There were a number of checks that, when the check is cut for a certain dollar amount and it's taken to the vendor to make a purchase, there's change sometimes and that change is supposed to be redeposited back into the account and a notation made as to when it was deposited. That didn't happen. Um, there were several payments that were made that sales tax was paid on, which we don't pay sales tax on. And there's also several requests to spend funds. And there's also several requests to spend funds that are entered into the Jeforia system to be able to expend dollars, and in both years, that wasn't done, a number of transactions.
Based upon what you found in the most recent audit of Metzger Middle School campus activity funds, do you have an opinion on whether Ms. Ross was fulfilling her duties as set out in Judson ISD Activity Fund Manual?
Yes, sir.
What's that opinion?
That she was not following the procedures that are in the manual.
Pass the witness.
Mr. Alzando, when did you do your spreadsheet?
After the investig, initial investigation was performed.
Okay, I'm going to ask you again. What date was the spreadsheet prepared?
I did not prepare it, sir. I'll look to see if there's a date on it, but I have, I'm not exactly sure of the date that was prepared.
Do you know whether it was prepared before or after Ms. Ross was no longer at the school?
It was prepared after Ms. Ross left the school.
Okay. So how long after Ms. Ross left the school was this spreadsheet prepared?
I'm not exactly sure of the date, sir. I would say within a week or two after she left.
Well, there's one date on there that says May of, on the, on your list of checks there, there's a one date that says May of two thousand and sixteen.
I don't see a check on this spreadsheet that says May of two thousand and sixteen, sir.
Okay, well, you have it on the, on our exhibit that we got from you, from your, I'm sorry, from the district.
Is this exhibit on top, sir, is it labeled, in parentheses, re-reviewed and revised, June the second, two thousand and sixteen?
No, I'm talking about the list of checks that said had insufficient funds.
Insufficient documentation?
Insufficient documentation. It says on five-twenty-seven, two sixteen. Now, do you know when Ms.?
What check number is that, sir?
It's check number seventeen-forty-nine.
Seventeen-forty-nine? That is not on this document.
Okay, well, it's on your checks with insufficient documentation, and you include it on five, from five-twenty-seven to sixteen.
I'm sorry, what?
Five-twenty-seven, two thousand and sixteen, payable to vendors Peter Piper Pizza.
It is, is it Exhibit Number Twenty-One?
I don't know if Exhibit Number Twenty-One, but I know that this, what we got, we got from this, have you ever seen that?
I, I-
Let me walk behind, approach you. I would represent to you, we got this from Mr. Russo at the interview that we had on May ninth.
I have not seen this document before, so I'm not exactly sure, but it is not the document that's in Exhibit Twenty-One. It's, it's different.
Do you know where this document came from?
I, no, sir, I don't.
All right, so if it says checks with insufficient documentation, you as the chief financial officer don't know where it came from?
No, sir, I did not prepare that document.
Well, before you said that the, there was no documentation, now you're saying there's insufficient documentation. Is that correct?
I'm just reading the heading on this document. It says that it's efficient doc, insufficient documentation.
All right. Now, in your, in the handbook for the manual for handling funds, how many documents are required to support each purchase?
There are at least four documents.
It is many as six.
There could attach, they could attach more to them, but there are four that are minimum requirements.
Okay, and what are the four minimum requirements?
You're going to have a check, that this is part of the document. You're going to have a request to spend funds. You're going to have a permit order. You're going to have an invoice or other document that shows what the monies were actually spent on.
How about a receipt?
For when we issue a check, there usually is not a receipt.
Okay. I'm saying that when you have doc, once you go back and look, as you did, after the purchases have been made, would you expect to find also a receipt?
That, when I use the word invoice, the word invoice and receipt interchangeably, so there's going to be something to substantiate that check, whether it's an invoice from a vendor or a receipt from HEB where they paid for something.
Okay, and if the, if they don't have the original invoice, they can, they can give you another copy of the invoice that please treat as the original. Is that correct?
If for some reason there is no invoice attached and, or, and or the, you know, the teacher comes back and says, oh, I forgot to get a receipt, and we have to contact that particular vendor and say, I need a receipt for the purchase that was made, if they don't send one that says original on it, then it can, then the one they send, if it's a duplicate, can be marked as treat as original because that's the one we're making the payment off of.
And if they don't bother to do that, they've received the goods, they've paid for them, it's just that the documentation that's required has not been completed. Is that correct?
We, it would just be noted that it was not marked as a, as a treat as original.
Okay, and I'm going to represent to you that the police chief has indicated that all monies were accounted for in this operation. Do you have any reason to disagree with that?
I do, only because I know some of the testimony that was given. So there are, you're asking me the question, so I'm going to answer it as I always do. We're told that there were pep rallies that were being held-
Please, I'm going to object to any hearsay. I'm, on person, to your personal knowledge, do you have any personal knowledge-
No, sir, not personal knowledge.
-that any monies were missing anywhere?
No.
And do you, and do you have any personal knowledge that would make you disagree with the chief of police to say that all monies were accounted for?
No.
We've also provided an exhibit, I think it's Exhibit, why don't I look at the list? Excerpts from the manual, page eight to thirteen. Do you have a copy, you have a copy of the manual?
What exhibit is it, sir?
It's, it's our Exhibit G, excerpts from the Judson ISD Activity Fund Manual.
I see Exhibit Fifteen.
He has a full copy of Exhibit Fifteen, so if you just show my pages.
Yeah, would you please turn to page eight?
Yes, sir.
And that's called Chapter Four, and, and it lists collecting and receiving cash. Would you read that, like, the last sentence of the first paragraph?
Where it says the secretary, begins with the secretary? Sir? Where it begins with the secretary?
Yeah.
"The secretary slash bookkeeper cannot accept monies that have not been counted and are not supported by an electronically completed deposit summary form with supporting documentation."
Okay. Now, if a coach or a sponsor charges some amount of money to get into one of their events, on the electronic summary, what, what's going to be on that? What, what would they have to come up with? They don't have everybody's name they got their money from, do they?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
How do they record the deposit summary electronic? "The secretary of bookkeeper cannot accept monies that have not been counted and are not supported by electronically completed deposit summary form with supporting documentation."
And so your question is, sir?
How does one support, by electronically completed deposit summary, the collection of funds-
Sure.
-at a, at a pep rally?
Sure, we have forms that are provided to the schools to, that describe the event that they're going to be collecting money for. If it's a fundraiser or whatever else, it's a form, it's an electronic form that they go in and complete, and they say, you know, what the purpose of the form, you know, what the event was, what the date was, how much money they collected, and that is turned in with the money to the bookkeeper slash secretary.
All right, and so the person that they would turn it in would be to the secretary slash bookkeeper?
That's correct.
And is that how you perceive the secretary's role as a secretary slash bookkeeper?
At the middle school is, yes, sir.
All right. Do, do you know what the policy is on collecting money for Gene Day?
No, sir.
Are you aware that there was no policy until last Monday?
No, sir.
Do you know that they issued a policy on Monday saying that there is to be no Gene Day?
No, sir, I'm not aware.
Were you aware of any policy prior to February twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen regarding Gene Day?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Alzando, are you aware of anything that would permit a principal to pay from-
Well, I'm not finished.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
All right. All right, and then I'll move down to the next paragraph. It's "Collection by person, money by persons other than the secretary or bookkeeper." "Monies may be collected by individuals other than the secretary slash bookkeeper, i.e. teachers, sponsors, coaches, librarians, clerical staff, for such items such as lost books, fines, student dues, fees, field trips, yearbooks, and other sales." Is that, is that a policy?
Yes, sir.
So, so sponsors can collect money. Clerical staff can collect money-
Yes.
-for items such as lost books, fines, student dues, fees, field trips, yearbooks, and other sales.
Yes, sir.
All right. "In such instances, the following procedures are to be followed. Sponsors, when sponsors are collecting cash, they shall still utilize collection form, deposit summary method described below and transmit the funds to the secretary or bookkeeper." If that's what a, a sponsor or a coach did, if they delivered the funds to the secretary or bookkeeper, they should have completed some documents associated with it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
These documents are important because they provide support showing where the deposited funds originate.
Yes, sir.
And so the emphasis is not to track where the funds are going, it's to find out where they came from. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so all funds must be turned in daily within twenty-four hours of collection.
Yes, sir.
And so if a sponsor or a coach collects money, fills out the form, and turns it into the secretary or bookkeeper, what role does the principal have?
The role is that they're supposed to authorize the event before it happens?
Okay, and assume they did.
Then, at that point, that's it.
Thank you. One of the things that they says, the payer requires a receipt for future reference. Receipts are used, moved outside of receipt books. If a receipt includes the original and two carbon copies to be used, the receipts are pre-numbered and must be issued with numerical sequence. Receipts are issued to individuals or meaning cash when the payer requires a receipt for future reference. Does a student who has lost his composition book three or four or five times, who is now charged for the fifth one, because that's, that's school, that's school business, that's school money. Every time they lose a book, that's, that's loss of school money, isn't it correct?
I'm going to object, there's absolutely no evidence in the record to reflect that students were multiply not having access to or having their own composition books.
Well, Mr. Alzando, assume that Ms. Ross is going to testify that they only, they only applied it when students had multiple losses, because the rest of the time, she just gave it to them. And that would be, that's her testimony already in the record, that she gave, she gave composition books. And that one of the people, Ms. Dixon, who's not going to be here, has indicated that, that they collected for composition books. And so there, there was never any opportunity for anybody to explore it until we get a chance here. But assume that, that the, assume that the testimony will be that the student has lost his book three or four times, composition book three or four times. They've given him several books and passed, that finally, Ms. Dixon says, we're going to make them pay because we want them to be responsible. And that's, that's been a quote directly from a transcript that we've heard here today. Would that, would that person who's collecting the money be required to make out for a fifty-cent fine, basically? Would that person be required to issue a receipt?
They have to turn something in to the bookkeeper with the money, whether it be a receipt, a listing with the kids' names on it that they collected money from, they have to turn in some kind of documentation-
Okay.
-to the bookkeeper's secretary.
So, but if they don't turn in the list of the documentation, but they just turn in something that says fines collected or fines for a lost composition books or whatever, is that adequate?
It's not adequate. We would go back and ask them to, please, give us more information.
Okay, and would the payer require, would, would a payer require a receipt for future reference?
Probably not, in that situation, where students probably not going to ask for a receipt.
All right. Because it says here, the original receipt would go to the student. The yellow copy would be attached to the teacher's sponsors' copy of the collection form, and the pink copy would stay with the book. So there's three pieces of paper associated with a fifty-cent fine, and if they are not there, and each receipt must have the date, the payee, the amount in figures, the amount written out, the purpose of the collection, the cash or check mark, or amount of each collected, account number to be deposited to, and a signature.
I'm going to object, there's absolutely no testimony to indicate that this was a fine. It was a charge made for students to get a composition notebook.
Oh, you can listen to the weighted evidence. We'll see what it is.
Your objection is noted, it's up to each board member to consider what weight to give to this evidence.
So, so theoretically, oh, no, I'm sorry. Let's assume that if a student pays fifty cents and assume it's because he's lost three or four previously, are these the kind, this documentation would go to a fifty-cent transaction?
Yes, sir, we have to count for all funds.
And so if somebody didn't do this on every fifty-cent transaction, they would not be in compliance.
That is correct.
And the person who would know whether or not they were in compliance would be the secretary or bookkeeper, isn't that correct? Because she would be the one accepting the money.
If it was turned in.
And if they didn't turn it in, and they kept it in the drawer, they would be in non-compliance.
Correct.
And in this process, assuming that, what role would the principal have or the chief administrator have in the, in the fifty-cent transaction?
They would have to have authorized that the student be charged for that composition book.
Okay, all right, and they, and they would have had a policy about it. They could have had a policy about it. Is that correct?
They have to authorize any fundraising that goes on, on that campus, and I mean by any activity that goes on on that campus.
All right, and then, and the fundraising can be conducted by teachers, sponsors, coaches, librarians, and clerical staff?
With principal's approval.
Thank you.
Your bet.
Mr. Alzando, do you know-
I'm, I'm still, I said, thank you, I said, thank you for your answer. I was so pleased with his answer.
I, I will, I will wait until he says he passes the witness. I'm sorry.
On page ten, report receipt of money by secretary slash bookkeeper. The following procedures shall be followed by the secretary slash bookkeeper when money is received from sponsors. Number one, the secretary or bookkeeper will count the money to verify agreement with the sponsors' deposit summary form and collection form. Now, if he's collected, if they've collected fifty cents from kids, will they have a deposit summary form, or they just have one number, or will they have, in addition to it, a three-page receipt with date, payee, amount in figures, amount written out, purpose of collection, cash or check marked, and the amount collected, account number to be deposited to, a signature?
It could be one or the other or both.
Okay. One or the other or both. Either deposit summary or all these other documents?
Yes, sir.
With all this information in it?
Yes, sir.
Did, had you ever seen any collections in your, in your, your control overseas? You've never seen a Gene Day fund?
No, sir.
Were you aware that Gene Day were going on at different schools?
No, sir, no, no, I had no idea. I know that we're allowed to wear jeans on Fridays typically for Spirit Day, but that's all I know about Gene Day.
So you're telling, sorry, that's the wrong way to phrase. The chief financial officer didn't know about Gene Day in the Judson Independent School District? And Judson Independent School District didn't issue a policy until last Monday?
I repeat what I said. I was aware that we could wear jeans, or, or schools allow people to wear jeans on Fridays for Spirit Day, but other than that, I'm not aware of anything else that's a Gene Day, whatever that means. But other than that, I'm not aware of anything else, it's a Gene Day, whatever that means.
Did any of your people that go out to visit and audit the schools ever bring it to your attention?
No, sir.
Do you have a Gene Day policy in your office?
Other than on Fridays, they can wear jeans for Spirit Day, especially during the football season.
Does Ms. Bayer audit any other schools beside, or she just do middle schools or is she a high schools or what?
As I said earlier, every campus is audited every year.
Okay. Did Ms. Bayer audit Wagner School?
That's one of our schools, every campus, every year.
I'm saying, has she audited them within the last two years?
Definitely.
Okay, and did, uh, she audit Kitty Hawk?
Definitely.
Did she audit Kirby?
Yes, sir.
Did she ever come back from those audits and tell you that they're having Gene Day funds coming in?
No, sir, not to my reflection.
Okay, number ten, or we still have number ten? Page ten. "The secretary bookkeeper will count the money, verify agreement with sponsors, deposit summary form, and collection forms. The count shall be done in the presence of the person turning in the money at the time the money is turned in, if possible. In all instances, the count shall be done within twenty-four hours of receipt of the money." Can, am I to interpret this to say that it just, sometimes it isn't realistic to stop and count the money? That as long as it's done within twenty-four hours, you're in compliance?
The practice or the procedure is that whenever somebody comes into the office to turn in money, it needs to be counted before that person walks away. So if you come in and the secretary's busy right at that moment, they may tell the person, "Can you come back in ten minutes, 'cause I'm doing something right now because we need to count the money together to make sure what you're telling me you're turning in is what I'm receiving?" And then, then you can go ahead and leave the money with us at that time.
Okay, and then the next pair, next sentence says, "In all instances, the count shall be done within twenty-four hours of the receipt of the money."
Yes, sir.
So if they come in and she's busy and they just leave the money with her, they can come back within twenty-four hours and count it?
No, they will not be allowed to leave the money with her at, if she's busy. She will have to make time sometime during that, you know, that day to make sure that she counts the money that was trying to be turned in. But the person will be asked to take it back with them unless it's in a sealed bag. Sometimes if it's a lot of money, they'll put it in a bank sealed bag where they tear it off and they, they can put it in the safe and say, "Okay, it's sealed in the safe, we're gonna leave it in there, come back later, we'll take it back out of the safe, still in the sealed bag, we'll unseal it together, we'll count the money, and then everything's okay."
And that's acceptable, that's an acceptable manner in which to deal with a large sum of money that you don't have time to count it at that time?
That's correct.
"After the monies are counted and verified by the sponsors' deposit summary form collection, the secretary bookkeeper shall issue a cash receipt to the sponsor. The secretary's bookkeeper's receipt book serves as supporting documentation for money deposited in the bank account. Three, a three-part receipt book should be used. The original copy of the cash receipt should be given to the person turning in the money, a carbon copy is attached to the deposit voucher, and a carbon copy remains intact in the receipt book." Is this in addition to the documentation that's on the deposit summaries?
Yes, sir, it's in addition to.
"All checks received or deposited shall be immediately endorsed for deposit only with an account with rubber stamp. If an account doesn't have a rubber stamp for it, is it acceptable for them to write on the back for deposit on it?"
Yes, sir, they could do that with, as long as they specify the school and the account number that it's gonna be deposited into.
All right. "The secretary bookkeeper shall write the activity account number on the upper left-hand corner of the check, if not already done so by the club sponsor." What does that mean?
That means that whenever somebody turns in a check to us, we need to know what account to deposit it into. If it's whatever organization is collecting the money, whatever account, so they need to write it on there so we know where that money's supposed to go.
Okay, but this kind of place that is between the secretary bookkeeper and the sponsor, as we talked about at the beginning, the teachers, the coaches, the sponsors, the clerical staff, the librarians?
Yes, sir.
That when one of them comes in with a, a check, then it's given to the secretary bookkeeper?
Yes, sir.
All right, and she's supposed to record it and prepare it for deposit?
Yes, sir.
All right. "Checks are often received for commissions, refunds, rebates, and donations. Keep the check stub as your backup for the receipt. If the check does not have a stub attached and the stub does not show the date and amount, make a copy of the check and backup. These items do not have to be placed on a deposit summary form. Commission checks from different vendors must be received separately." Is, uh, is there a situation where they can receive a check for, like a contribution? Uh, with, with, depending on the size of it, obviously, but supposedly they received a, a grant. But that, that wouldn't go to the school itself, it would, it would come somewhere here?
It depends on the size of the grant. If it was a five hundred dollar grant, it could handle through the school, we need to be notified about it. But if it was a thousand or fifteen hundred or five thousand, it would be handled through our office.
And what about a thirty thousand dollar grant?
It would be handled through our office.
And if, if a, if an administrator wanted to purchase a banner for his school that they've been given, mentioned by TEA or something, would that purchase have to go through you with?
It depends on the, how much it's gonna cost. Uh, if it's, you know, if we're talking about a two hundred dollar expenditure, no, it doesn't have to go through our office. If it is a five thousand dollar or greater, then yes, it definitely has to go through our office.
Could the, could the school itself purchase the banner? Or does that have to be approved by the, by one of the superintendents, assistant superintendent?
If it is a recognition, like because they were recognized campus or something like that, uh, they probably would speak to their, to their supervisor about, "Hey, can we go ahead and buy this and put it on our campus?" And, but it's not necessarily required that they do that, but it could, it could be, it could go that way as well. But the principal could actually pay for that out of their campus funds.
But, but they have, don't they have to get permission before you put something out on the front of the school? You have to get permission from somebody else, right?
Typically, they're, they'll confer with their supervisor to make sure that it's okay. On a thing like a Texas, a TEA recognition, it's not gonna be as questioned as if it was some other thing that, you know, it wasn't a TEA recognition.
I'm gonna have you look at what's been marked Exhibit C from the, from Ms. Ross. Now, approach the witness.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
This been, this has been offered and accepted as the petitioner's Exhibit C. Now, I'm asking my question, what's wrong with that picture?
What's wrong with that picture?
Do they normally put recognition for each school up?
Some schools will, some schools don't.
Okay, and who, what decides that?
It's up to, depending on the situation. I mean, we have some schools that, when they were recognized, they decided they were gonna buy banners and put them in front of their campuses, others that didn't wanna do that. They did something different. Uh, it just, it's up to the school to see if they wanna do something like this.
Okay, and if the school wants to do something like this, they still have to get approval from their superior, don't they?
It would always be good practice to do that. Something like this where it's not, where again, it's a TEA recognition, it's a fact, they're, we're not gonna question it if they do something like that.
Okay, again, do you know how this, whether, whether or not this was approved by her supervisor for the two thousand thirteen Metzger School for two thousand fifteen?
No, sir, I have no idea.
And if she wanted to put another, and she would receive a recognition from TEA for two thousand fifteen, who would have to approve posting this banner?
Again, it would be best practice to run it through her supervisor to make sure that there's no issue. And once it's okay, then she can go ahead and purchase it. Or we, sometimes we'll purchase them.
And do you know why there wasn't one purchased for Metzger School for two thousand fifteen?
No, sir, I couldn't tell you that.
Uh, I'd like to call your attention now to Exhibit twenty. Uh, it says insufficient documentation. And, uh, first of all, I'd, I'd like to ask your question based upon your experience training and background as chief financial officer. Uh, do you have an opinion on whether any of these vendors represent, uh, any kind of, uh, red flag to you outside of Ms. Ross's brother?
There's only another one that it's, that I would have more questions about, and that's the Metzger Middle School PTO.
Okay, and that was in two thousand fourteen?
Yes, sir, September the twelfth, two thousand fourteen was when the check was issued.
So, and did you, have you ever copied that check? That was deposited to the, uh, the, that was the last thing you ever deposited into the Metzger Middle School PTO account, wasn't it?
It wasn't, this does not say that it was deposited into the Metzger Middle School PTO account. And we have no records of what deposits go into their PTO 'cause they're a totally separate organization than we are. This just tells me that there was a check that was cut from Metzger Middle School, uh, activity funds to the Metzger Middle School PTO.
And, and what's the endorsement on the backside?
I don't know that I have that one, let me see here a second. Do you remember what exhibit it was that had all the, the checks that we're talking about?
Mr. Moore President, could I ask your indulgence for another counsel break?
Yeah, I was, I was waiting to, it was a good break, um,
I didn't wanna jump off at this point.
I was waiting to finish this, we have a good break. It's twelve-ten right now. Would you all like to take an hour break and come back? Or you wanna finish your questioning, or you, you tell me, I wanna be fair to everybody here.
I think it's probably best if we take a break 'cause I, I wanna talk to him about this exhibit.
Okay, do you want us to break for lunch, or you just wanna take a break?
I mean, what's the pleasure of the body?
'Cause here, I guess my question is, Mr. Russo, are you gonna ask for more time?
I need five minutes, that's all I need.
Uh, you need, okay.
But I think, I would suggest thirty minutes.
You're at, you're at minute, one hour thirty-four minutes. Can you finish in twenty-five minutes, or do you need more time?
Uh, I'm probably gonna need a little more time. And I, I'm assuming that the cross-examination time is, is, is a part of the two hours each side is given?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna need maybe another thirty minutes.
Okay, so, okay, another thirty, 'cause you're at one hour and thirty-four minutes right now. So you have twenty-five minutes left, so you want another thirty minutes. And you'll get another thirty minutes too, sir, if that's fair. So, you guys wanna break for lunch, or you wanna take a break and head on? Tell me what you wanna do. What do y'all wanna do? Huh? Let's take a ten-minute break and see where we go. We adjourned at twelve, what, fifteen, fourteen?